I'll get started with preliminary business. We have a A and R for nine and 11 Shell Lane, TJP Realty. Map 20 lots 1032 and 1033. Oops, where'd you guys go? You still there?
Yeah.
Okay, there you are.
Waiting for somebody to show up to represent the application.
Good evening, if I may. My name is Raoli Sargi representing the applicant, TJP Realty LLC. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, very faintly, isn't he?
Yeah, you're, a lot of distortion on your audio.
See if I can do something better here. Can you hear me better now?
Little bit.
Yeah, so this project is, there's two existing adjacent lots. They're both non-buildable lots. And the owner, what he wants to do is take the middle line that divides the two lots and shift that line westwardly to create more of two lots that are equal in size. So we're looking to create two lots that are approximately 7,400 square feet. So all it's being done is just taking that middle lot line and shifting it to create equal sized lots. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
What's the frontage we need there?
This lot will not meet frontage. Currently with this shift, we're gonna obtain two lots of about 40 foot of frontage on Shell Lane, each one.
What are they gonna be used for?
The current owner doesn't have a purpose right now for them. They still remain non-buildable. He just wants to divide them so that they're equally in size or close to being equal in size. No, no proposed structures are in front of anybody at this point for any of these two lots. And they're still non-buildable lots even with this change in property line. So there's there's no real purpose for structure for this other than having two lots of equal size.
I feel a lot better if I did understand why. There's gotta be a reason that this is going on for not buildable. I mean, there's gotta be a next step down the road that the owners are thinking about. And then I know you don't have to, you don't have to disclose that, but it would be helpful.
I've seen this in the past. I don't know if this is gonna be the case for this particular change in lot lines. But I've seen it in the past for inheritance, everything gets split equally. But I don't know if that's the case here. I know that that's one of the cases I've seen in the past.
Shouldn't these, I can't read the area, I'm sorry, but.
The, the area for lot 1, 1,032 is 7,392. And the, the other lot, it's also 7,392. They both front on Shell Point Bay. So that square footage is based on mean high water, which over time it does change. So this lots sizes are dependent on mean high water.
I'm kind of at a loss there. In common ownership, I think technically they're supposed to be combined. I don't know.
Even as combined lots, these are non-buildable lots. So there's, there's no buildability for these two, these two parcels.
And they're currently two lots now or?
That's correct. There's two lots now and there'll be two lots after the change of that lot line.
As I understand it, George, there's two lots right now of unequal size. And they're moving the line in the middle to make two lots of equal size.
This is where, this is where the former lot line runs right on here.
That's correct.
I see that. I, I know what's intended, but.
No, actually, I think Richard was right. We don't know what's intended. We know what they want to do, but we don't know what, what the ultimate goal is.
George, could I chime in?
Sure.
The fact that they're labeled as not building, not building lots, I think is all sufficient. Even if you combine them into one, that would be the only reason that you want to do it, that it was a building lot and there was nothing else around it that at one time was associated with it. That you could say was a part of the lots that would make it comply with zoning. So I don't think there's an issue here at all, especially with the notation that is on the plan that says that they're not to be considered building lots. I don't think there's any question. It doesn't matter what they want to do with them. For building purposes, they're not eligible for that. But I don't think there's a problem with signing the plan as an A and R.
I concur with Charlie, George. This is, this is pretty simple.
Yeah, it should be, but I was just thinking in terms of it's a they're in common ownership, they should now be one lot and then, but I think the intention is to convey it to other lots being created, but that's not what's in front of us. I don't have a problem with moving the lot line. I just want it to be right. So does anybody have any other questions?
No.
Any motions?
Motion to approve the A and R as presented.
Motion by Mike King. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Richard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Sounds unanimous.
Thank you.
You should be doing roll call votes and your votes in online meetings.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Who's that?
Mike.
Oh, there you are.
Yes, we hear you, Michael. I was, I was asking a question earlier. I didn't realize I was on mute. Is there any evidence of any foundations in them lots?
I don't know that. I don't know if that gentleman is still with us here or not. Might be.
I, I can try to answer it, but on the plans, we don't have any indications of any structures on, on these two lots.
Get that, Mike?
And, yeah, I got that. And another thing, I think it would be a lot clearer if it was marked as a parcel versus a lot. We went through that discussion years ago. Apostles are piece of land. They can do whatever they want. A lot. I can see, I, I know where you're coming from, George. It's, we're gonna see it again down the road, I'm sure.
I think we're gonna, I think it's connected to the next A and R that's in front of us. You were on mute, Mike. What, did you vote on that?
Yes, I did. You didn't, you didn't read my lips.
Was that in the affirmative?
Yes.
The next up is an approval not required plan for, what does it say?
No, it's not.
It's not an A and R. What is this?
This was, to give you the history on this one, you had previously seen that four and six as a, an A and R. You said it was a subdivision because the road had to be improved. They came in with a subdivision with an improved road and what they, they didn't show street lighting on the plans. Because they wanted a waiver for it. However, there wasn't a, a specific action taken to waive the street lighting requirement. So the question is how, what process you want to follow now to confirm the waiver.
We have a choice of processes, Ken?
Yeah, if it's a modification of the subdivision, you have to go to public hearing. But if this, if this was a, an implied waiver because it was not shown on the plans, street lighting was not shown that you're then confirming it that you waived the requirement for, for lighting on the street.
So do we need to acknowledge that we approved the plan without the street lighting?
Yes, you do.
Or say that this is a minor modification?
It's not a minor modification because the modification already occurred. It's a confirmation of the release of the requirement by waiver of subdivision rules and regulation.
Is that a motion?
Someone repeats it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm attorney Jillian Morton here for, for the applicant on this one. So Ken is correct that in the, in the subdivision requirements, it does talk about street lighting. So we're looking to, to record this and we kind of caught that. So we wanted to confirm with, with the board that that wasn't something that was required since it wasn't discussed, discussed on, on the plan. And so that's why we're looking just for this clarification.
Thanks. So the motion would be to confirm the waiver of street lighting as they were not shown on the plan.
That would do it.
So I'll make that motion that we, that we confirm the waiver of street lighting as it wasn't shown on the plan for definitive subdivision on nine and 11, not nine and 11. What number is it?
Four and six.
Four and six Shell Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Richard, seconded. I think I heard Mike in, Mike.
Have it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call. Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Mike King?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And I for my vote. Russell, did this yet? I don't hear anything. Very good.
Thank you.
George, I have the mail in front of me. Am I supposed to sign it?
I guess you can.
Because she gave it to me once before she left.
She gave you the magic pen too?
Yes, I do. I gotta bring a new one.
Okay. Next up is a continued public hearing for the article for town, for special town meeting. The Recreation Entertainment Overlay District, North group 5 as revised.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Toccio here for the notice group. Hello, everyone. Thanks for the time. We last met two weeks ago. And I, at that time, we had followed up from a February 1st meeting where there were comments which we then adopted and presented to you folks at the last meeting. Towards the end of the last meeting where we had a quorum, but we kind of had less than the number of members that we were shooting for. You folks made the decision to push it out to the 22nd this evening. And we also had to circulate. You folks should also have a red line of what the changes were last time. Only a few of you have them. So you should, you should have those now. I'm prepared to answer any questions if, if you folks have any questions or however you want to direct it at this point. I'll take your lead.
But to be clear, there's been no changes to the article as written and presented last week. Is that correct, Jeffrey?
Yes, it is. It's correct.
I have no questions, George.
Mike Baptiste, were you, are you up to date on the meetings that you may have missed or?
Yep.
You have any questions?
No.
One, one thing that struck me in, in thinking about this and how to best execute it was would it be impossible to submit a the word general plan for anything up in that area before you gain the overlay district zoning to submit to one board or both? Master plan for the project.
As in like, like a, what's the word I'm looking for now? Just like a, an example of like boxes for massing or what? What would you want?
Like, a, a, I would say basic master plan on what you, what the intention was, how you were gonna handle like drainage and and discharge, you know, not, not strict engineering plans, but a narrative of how things were gonna be handled. I apologize for throwing this at you at the last minute. It's just.
Yeah, I, I'm, unfortunately now we don't have anything proposed. We don't have anything designed. What we did do is we went in, we did the, you know, things that we felt that were comfortable with. For example, there was a question, could we up the open space to the 25% minimum, which we did do. Other questions with respect to all of the groundwater requirements. We know whatever goes there is going to be at a sophisticated level that, you know, it's either going to require a sewer connection, which, you know, this would be part of the proposal or for water treatment system. So on that level, I've got a good idea that based on the amount of land, based on where it is, also based on the intended access, that it's going to be at a certain level of investment that's going to require all of those pieces. But as far as going out and saying, this is something that could happen, I, we're just not in that position right now. This in, yeah, go ahead, George. I'm sorry.
My intent was if this, if this district, if this overlay were created before you or anyone else up there would apply for a permit, you would submit a master plan for what's intended, whether it's next five years. And if one or both of the land use boards agreed that you handled it with the intent of the R130 district and, and it's a doable project, then would trigger you being able to use the zoning created by the overlay.
Right.
So it, you wouldn't be something you'd submit now, but
Right.
if the town meeting chose to create this overlay district, that would trigger how you took advantage of it. Is that unreasonable?
That's, that's exactly how we do it. So what we did was we put in the draft. So once this, once this can be approved potentially by town meeting and then also the Attorney General's Office has to approve it. What then happens is we drafted in all of those pre-filing supplemental requirements that would allow, you know, for something to come in as a cohesive plan. We also added, if you'll remember, Mike King asked about phasing and we went back in and we enhanced that section as well. So that we'll be coming in with phases shown. And then the board would actually go through and discuss, you know, infrastructure for the phasing as a full built out, whatever the master plan is. So we went through all of that before. So you folks would have the comfort that when this comes in, it's going to be something that comes in overall as opposed to something just piecemeal. And that's, that's not a problem because anyone who's going to do this has to figure out all of the drainage and all of the infrastructure beforehand. So that lends itself to going in and designing all of the phases. Whether the phases all, you know, whatever the timing is going to be originally, it might be something, it's a five year plan, but it winds up being seven, eight, et cetera. We'd expect that there'd be conditions on, you know, timing, going back in to make any changes to it. And that's, that's the way that we've laid it out in the draft that you folks have in front of you right now.
I think last time we met, we postponed this in the hopes of having a full board.
Right.
And we found ourselves, we find ourselves minus one member again. What's the board's pleasure? And, and did I read that right? That the special town meeting has been moved to April?
Correct. So I believe, I want to say April 10th, if that's a Saturday. And then we're before the financial, you know, FinCon coming up as well. So what we're trying to do is get the pieces in place now and I'll check that date right now.
George, this is Richard. From a planning board perspective, we have no yea or nay say on this, on getting it on the warrant. All we do is, is we can, we hold a public hearing and give the public an opportunity to come and talk and, and present their thoughts on this to us and the rest of the town. This is our fourth session doing that. I think we've met that obligation rather well. And the only other thing that this planning board has to do is make a recommendation at town meeting. So I think we're pretty close to complete here.
And we'd ask you folks, if you can, we've, it's been, it's been delayed with COVID, with everything that's going on. It's, I think this is actually the fifth hearing now. And if it's, if it's possible, you folks have, you know, even a quorum plus one, three votes would be required for a recommendation. And again, it's just a recommendation for the zoning bylaw, you know, for town meeting. So, you know, no, no decision that you make tonight would, you know, automatically make it, you know, part of your zoning bylaws. It would just be your review under the process for the zoning proposals for the articles, just going through. And the changes that we've made, I mean, we've gone through several versions. I think you'll all recognize that we listened to your comments. We weren't dismissive. It wasn't anything that, you know, it went in a, a direction that was not inconsistent with your questions and your suggestions. What we did was we got what was a relatively comprehensive zoning mixed use bylaw, which is formatted on both your style and your zoning bylaw. And then also what we did was we used some other mixed use that we've done in other communities. And then what we did was we tightened it up as we received the comments. I went through last time what all of the comments were on the changes that we made and you folks now have that in the red line. I think that we've listened and been responsive. Your input's been excellent. And I think it's in a position where town meeting can actually listen to the presentations, ask questions and be in a position to make a decision on it.
How remaining board members, are you prepared to vote this evening?
I am. I'm all set.
Yeah.
Okay. And I thank you, Attorney Toccio, if I follow up your name. But pointing that out, I think we're well aware of that, but it's, it's good to have everybody that's listening in kind of get the explanation. This is an article on a special town meeting and it has received your public input as stated. It's time for the planning board to make a recommendation for town meeting. So with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the zoning district as amended?
George, you're not taking any further public comment?
I, I think we kind of determined last time we were just gonna vote. Forgot to close the public hearing.
Yeah, you did.
Thanks, thanks for the heads up.
Mr. Barrett, if I could make a comment before you take the vote, Eddie Percivich here.
I don't want to draw this out a lot, so if you could make it brief, that would be great.
I'm sorry I didn't get this last time, but I just realized what's going on here. The attorney mentioned that they're gonna use a hookup to the town sewer. Town sewer is.
One of the options, yes.
Yes, one of the options. And town sewer is currently at almost maximum capacity. And unless they find a different way to discharge, they're gonna not be able to increase the capacity. The section, second option was to build wastewater treatment plant up there in the area that they're going to develop. Question is, where do they discharge the effluent after it's been processed? Cause there's no place to discharge it up there. And if they do into the ground, it's gonna go into our drinking water. So before you take a vote, realize to me, the most important thing up there is our freshwater sources. Thank you.
Thanks.
George, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I have one question and it's real quick. Richard, this is Nancy McHale.
Of course, Nancy. It's up to George to, we, the goal was to close the hearing and just, and move forward without comment tonight. So it's up to George if he wants to let you speak or not.
Yes, go ahead, but again, please make it brief. We've got a lot to.
It is brief. There's, at the original proposal, there was one map. On January 14th, there was another map. The February 8th iteration has no map attached. What, which map are we talking about? And can that be made very clear to the town meeting when it happens and for all publicity? I just find it disconcerting that there's no map attached. Thank you.
The map didn't change between January and now, I don't believe. Have the date online.
That's true, Nancy. The, the, the current map is a much smaller map. There's only been two, the, the big one and the small one. And it's, it is currently the small.
Because there's no reference to any of the parameters within the, where it is in the text. So it just says in the map. And it's like, okay, which, which map are we looking at? Thank you.
The map that was put on the screen last meeting is still the same.
Okay.
Thanks.
George, if I can, that, that map that was put up there in the screen is not sufficient to describe the zone that you're gonna hold on. It doesn't have a northern boundary attached to it. All it says, it's bound itself by the Route 25, on the east by Gun Charlie Road. And I believe on the east by, on the west by Gun Charlie Road and east by Rose Brook and the Plymouth Town Line. Doesn't say anything about the northern boundary. Where is it? Doesn't say anything about the northern boundary. Where is it? Doesn't go to the Plymouth Line in the north, according to the map. So where's the cutoff point?
It's where, if I may, George, it's where it's shown on the map. We are working, as I said last time, we're working with Mr. Buckland to come up with the list of the parcels that'll be included. And that'll be supplemented as we go forward. What we're asking is if you would vote for the recommendation question for the proposed bylaw that corresponds with the map, which is shown with the shaded area. I don't, in front of me, have the precise number that was in a cover letter of how many acres. And we're currently working with Mr. Buckland to come up with the precise parcels that are included within the district.
If you're going to do it by parcel, then the parcels should be identified not only by number, but by the date by which you're doing that. Parcel lines can change. And I've made this argument on different times at town meeting where they have put zoning together and defined the zoning district by parcels of land. It's a very poor way to do it because parcel lines change. So unless you're going to specify the parcel lines as they exist as of the date of town meeting, it will end up being an inaccurate line that cannot be defined. And it would become a subject for argument later on. It should be by specific line that can be identified on the ground.
I'm not, I'm not sure I agree with that, Charlie, but-
Agree it or not, agree it or not, Richard.
Excuse me, excuse me. We have passed overlay zoning districts in this town since I've been here that have called out specific lot lines on more than one occasion. I understand your point, but to-
You ever had to work with it?
If I, if you think that you need to go out and survey the land to create the specific lines, now I think that's way overboard.
You're mistaken. What I'm saying, you're not understanding.
I think that we can call out the lots as they are on a given date and that should suffice.
Yeah, we're working on the parcels now. As a matter of fact, that's how we were told the folks had done it in the past. We'll work up a map with specific lot lines on it. At this, and I mentioned that at the last meeting, two weeks ago as well. And nothing was said at that point. So at this point, you know, the question was asked, is the map the correct map? The map's been out there for several months now. This is our fifth meeting. You know, we've put a lot of time into this. We're trying to do something that's, that's a positive for you folks. You know, if, if we have to go through and we have to, you know, have further specificity on that map, that's not a problem. We're just trying to get to a point where we either get the recommendation or we don't. Just, you know, we just have to get to the point so that we can go to the next level. You folks are going to have an opportunity to, to look at this again, look at a master plan, be able to weigh the merits, be able to weigh the science, everything on it. So what we do is we'd ask if you could please recommend this article, just to give us a chance to get to town meeting and see what the people in town, you know, feel for this. What we're hearing and we're seeing reports that say that, you know, whether it's with COVID, just economic conditions, that revenues are going to be few and far between. There's going to be a competition for good projects that are coming up in the future. Wareham is faced with a choice of, you know, it's a single family housing zoning, you know, or a gravel pit, you know, would respectfully suggest that the opportunity to have a proposal that meets these stringent requirements of this zoning bylaw are good for the town, good for revenues and, you know, can result in a very positive project. So we'd ask if you folks could vote for, vote for this. That would be appreciated.
I, I think what Charlie is suggesting, that maybe a better description could be created before town meeting and maybe the document be amended at that time.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, we actually will work with Riley as well. We, I, I think that's, that's a good idea. We could definitely consult with him and follow up if he's got the inclination, the time to do that. I think that that would be an excellent suggestion as well.
George, if I could just comment for Mr. Tocchio, I believe your intent is to have Glen Charlie Road as the boundary on the west. Is that not correct?
At north and west.
Well, it can't be on the north because it doesn't go north. It goes, it goes due north. So it can't have a north boundary. But there is a terminus for Glen Charlie Road. The layout of Glen Charlie Road has a terminus. So if you were to select that terminus and then go due east to Red Brook, you would have a good defined boundary for the northern line. And it wouldn't matter what parcels it touched. That was simply a straight line that would be on the map then, and it would be defined as the northern terminus of Glen Charlie Road. Once you leave Glen Charlie Road, it becomes Barker Road. And that's a different road altogether.
Yeah, I, I don't mind working with you after. The, the intent is to keep the neighborhood up on the, the northeast corner. Out, there's also the Boston Edison easement. So we tried to define that on, on the colored plan that we had. And I'd gladly work with you following vote this evening to do that.
I'm, I'm just a public citizen making comments, so you perhaps should go through Ken's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
George, I have, we had a motion I made to close the public hearing.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Is there discussion? None? Hearing none, I'll look for a vote. All in favor?
We have to do a roll call.
I'm just about to do that. Mike Baptiste?
No.
Richard?
Yes.
Mike King?
Yes.
And yes, for me.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate it greatly. And we appreciate your patience going through all of this so carefully with, well.
Careful. That was just to close the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Oh, and I appreciate that too.
So I think the next thing, George, is that we can have a vote by this board. I believe that four out of the five is adequate, given the number of sessions that we've had, so that we can let the applicant move on to the other boards in town and do the work they need to do.
Was that a motion?
Need a motion to call for a vote?
Yes, please.
So I make a motion that this board vote on whether, on a yea nay to support or not support the hospitality, recreation and entertainment overlay zoning article?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, I will call for vote. All in favor? Aye.
Well, you got to do a roll call.
Richard?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Nay.
Mike King?
Aye.
And aye for me. Aye for me, e for aye. So that's
Great.
What we at, three, one? Say, I
Super.
Supported it last time and I still think it deserves consideration at town meeting and further discussion.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Again, I appreciate it very much. Have a good night. Thank you, Ken.
Let's see, where am I? Next, we have site plan review for Borrego Solar Systems, 140 Tyhonet Road.
That's been asked for a continuation to March 8th.
Okay. And the next item is site plan review for solar energy installation, B E R E L L C, Carol of Beals and Thomas. Zero North Carver Road, Wareham. Map, 104.
You have to vote the continuation as well.
Yeah. We can, you say to March? What was the date?
March 8th.
Hi. This is, this is Adam Schumacher with B E R E L L C. I don't, I don't think we asked for a continuation.
No, it wasn't for you. It was the previous one.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. I thought I heard that.
Yeah, if you'd just wait one second, I'd ask for a vote, continue to March 8th for 140 Tyhonet Road. Is that 140, 150?
140.
Motion and vote to continue? To March?
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Mike Baptiste. Any discussion? All in favor? Mike Baptiste?
Yes. Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And aye. Very good. Thank you. Now we'll get back to the solar project on Zero Carver Road. I don't know where you went. Where'd you go?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here. So good evening, members of the board. For the record, I am Sarah Stearns with Beals and Thomas. And with me tonight, as you just heard from Adam Schumacher from B E R E L L C, representing the applicant. We also have our agricultural consultant, Ian Ward, with us from New England Consulting, as well as the landowner Brett Meredith. So I will hop right into a brief presentation, if that suits the board. We did file this a bit ago, but we haven't actually made an opening presentation to the board. So I'd like to just give you an overview of what we're proposing. And then we can open up to questions. I've got some exhibits to share and we can go from there. So Ken, would you like me to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, bear with me for a second, folks. All right, how's that?
Good.
Okay, great. So this is a site, go to the cover page here, the locust map. This is a, an approximate 110 acre site owned by Brett Meredith that straddles the Carver-Wareham Town Line. This is Tremont Street and Carver where it turns into Carver Road and heads out. As you can see, the majority of the property is located in Wareham. It's about 77 acres in Wareham, 33 acres in Carver total for the property. And then if I switch over to this aerial with a site layout on it, the, the town line sort of came out a little bit lightly on this print, but it's right here. So what we're focusing on tonight is the majority of the project, which lies in Wareham. It's about 28 acres total of a proposed solar array. This is a dual-use project. I'm not sure if you've seen one of these yet as a board. I know you're very familiar with the SMART program and solar arrays in general. But this may be the first that you've seen or one of the first, I, I believe, in Wareham. That's a dual-use project filed under the SMART program as an agricultural solar tariff generation unit. Lots of acronyms with these types of projects. So very generally, the plan is to add a three megawatt AC or 7.3 megawatt DC solar array on top of the active cranberry bogs and agricultural land. And as part of the dual-use program, in the SMART program, the, the intent of it is that the agriculture comes first. This is an agricultural site. It would remain as an agricultural site with the addition of the solar array on the farmed land. And as part of that, it's a little bit non-traditional from a conventional array in that the spacing and the orientation and the layout of the panels is a little bit different from what you've seen before in a conventional array. The spacing is increased to allow for wider areas between the rows for continued cultivation. The panels are installed at an increased height for the same reason. This particular design includes single axis trackers so that the panels essentially follow the sun throughout the day to make the most use of the daytime sunlight. And we, I'm sure Adam can get into the nuance of that later on, if anybody's interested in learning more about that. But really just what I wanted to point out to the board is that these projects, if, you know, on a appropriately located site can be a real win-win for the, the landowner who's looking to diversify income. We all know what's going on with the cranberry industry these days and it's not a pretty picture. So this is not a project, a type of project that will work for every farmer in the Commonwealth. But for those that it's an option for, it really could be very beneficial. It also is a great way to add renewable energy to the community in an area that's already devoid of trees. We're not talking about any tree clearing. It's a wide open space. It makes sense to try to take advantage of this wide open area. I also just wanted to point out on this aerial that, so the property line itself is the Muyviantic River. So this dark line right in here, it's, it's coincident with that in, in many of the locations. But just looking at the surrounding areas on this particular site, it is not abutted by a residential, residential neighborhood of any kind, though it is located in the Arc 60 district. It's surrounded by land that's in similar use that's associated with agriculture. There's a significant span of wetlands before we get to the next farm over to the east here. So site selection wise, this checks a lot of boxes. Again, it's actively farmed land and really the design has tried to incorporate use of the areas that are inactive agricultural operations. We are proposing two equipment and battery pads on the Wareham side of things, all connected through underground electric, which would connect onto the Carver side as well. And then one interconnection point in this area. And I do just want to point out, since we filed the plans, we have made a couple of modifications. I didn't want to submit any modified plans until we've had this first opening hearing. But I do just want to mention this. You can see that the, the site is quite well screened from the public way, from Carver Road. And then up at where it turns into Tremont Street at the Carver line. We had originally proposed interconnection at this point, if everyone can see my little hand here. Since we have submitted this, we, as a team, have met and reconsidered this because this would include some tree clearing in some sort of utility easement that would need to be maintained. So what you'll see in our next submittal, as we incorporate Mr. Rowley's comments and responses to that, is a revised plan that eliminates this interconnection point and utilizes the proposed spur road, if you will, that we're, that we would like to incorporate from the existing access to the Meredith's main shop off of Carver Road. So this access road that would connect directly to the Wareham side of things would also serve as the interconnection point. So there would be one area of clearing off of that, off of that main road. So I just wanted to point that out. And then, just looking at my notes, I can cover everything. I guess one of the important things, also I just wanted the board to take note of is that the applicant and owner have worked very closely with our agricultural consultant. Many of you know Ian Ward from other projects. His input has been instrumental in the design of this so that it is truly an agriculture-first project. The layout has a- The layout has accommodated the Meredith's cultivation and harvest areas such that it's not going to be detrimental or, you know, more of a headache than it needs to be, we will say. It allows continued access from their existing road network, et cetera. So that has been a major factor in the design of this project as well. And we are grateful for Ian's input, and he's here for questions later as well. So, as part of the requirement to qualify for the SMART program for a dual-use project, I'd also just wanted to note that the ongoing agricultural activity is obviously required, but annual reporting and submission of crop numbers to MDR and DOE R at the state level is a stringent requirement of remaining in this program. So just in summary, this product has been designed in compliance with the zoning bylaw. The work is limited to actively farmed bogs and other disturbed areas associated with the agricultural operation. And as Mr. Rowley noted in his comment letter, the layout and the orientation of the panels is slightly different from conventional solar arrays, given the solar orientation, the height, as well as the spacing between rows. And again, just, you know, want to make clear that the idea of minimizing or avoiding tree removal for a project of this scope is really something that we, as a group, really can get behind. And then, lastly, I just wanted to touch on the screening from the main roads. We've got the main road, Carver Road here, which, you know, you can see just from the aerial, is significantly set back in most of these areas. There's also a nice tree line along North Carver Road for the majority of it. And we can get into that as well. North Carver Road has a residence here and down in this southern piece here, but significant screening exists already today. So that's been very helpful. The Merediths have done a really nice job maintaining their site. It is impeccable out there. The roads are in excellent condition, and it's been maintained very well over the years. So that's really it. I also just wanted to note that we did have a pre-filing meeting with Ken back in November. Ken, if you can believe that. And then, following that, in December, we had a department head meeting. So we had the opportunity to give an overview of the project to the community's department heads, which was very helpful. And we had the opportunity to answer some questions and get some preliminary feedback, and we were able to incorporate a lot of that into the design plan. So we hope that this reflects all of that. We're certainly open to questions, comments, discussion. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, to guide the discussion from here. And we're happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have, or the public. Thank you.
Thanks. And I did drive by the site, and I would reinforce your comment that it appears to be a nice, well-run farm, neat, and seems to be well-operated. From a novice that eats cranberries in that world.
Keep eating them. That's what these farmers need.
So, clarification for me. This is Richard. The gated entrance, can you point out on the map where that is?
Okay, so there's an existing gated entrance down on this southern corner off of North Carver Road.
Okay.
And then there, the Meredith and Brett, feel free to jump in here, since this is your property. This is the Meredith's main access to their shop and gives them access to the northern part of their site. But this is a locked gate down in this corner here.
Okay. Charlie, I'm looking at the... Charlie, are you still there?
Yeah, he's muted, though. There he is.
I am.
Charlie, I'm looking at the photos that you had passed on to us, and thank you very much for those, by the way. It appears to me, and I did not have an opportunity to drive up there, but I have looked at it on the Google Maps and the street views as much as I can. And from what I can tell, the visual impact of passing traffic appears to be only at that gated entrance. And I would ask you to let me know if I'm close on that. Does that sound about right to you?
You're talking about the southern gated entrance?
Yes, off of North Carver Road.
Yeah, if you were traveling from a southern point to that and headed north, as you observed, you would see the better part of that field. There is one other small location north of that, which is about opposite. There's a dwelling on the left, as you travel north, almost to the intersection of Route 58. And opposite that house, there's a barn. I believe it's owned by a family named Sellen. I think it was owned by Gibbs at one time. Actually, all these bogs were owned by Gibbs at one time. But that parcel that contains the barn is open enough so where you would get pretty good visual impact of the solar panels there also. For a short period of time, as you're traveling, to be sure, but nevertheless, it's there. So there are two spots, one in the very south and one about where the barn is. The rest of it is pretty well protected.
Thank you very much.
This picture doesn't really, you have to look closely, but this requires no clearing? Is that what I'm seeing?
Mr. Chairman, the only area that we're proposing any clearing is just where we're proposing to create a spur off of the existing driveway for the electrical point of interconnection and an access to the bogs that doesn't disrupt the Meredith's operation at their shop. So clearing is limited to this area. And again, this has been eliminated combined with this driveway and interconnection point.
And has there been any testing or any production done under this new style of placing panels?
Testing in what way?
Productivity.
Ian, do you want to respond to that, or Adam? There are some test projects that have been underway in coordination with UMass and Triple CGA, but Ian can probably speak in more detail about that, Mr. Chairman.
So, before you go on, I'm not quite sure where George is going, but I have questions on a similar site. I'd like to know what the impact is to the overall productivity of the cranberry bog, as not necessarily the electricity generation.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about the agricultural component.
Okay, good, good. Same thing. Okay.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, Ian Ward, New England Consulting Services. And yeah, there's been, this is, all these projects are new. The SMART program is new. That said, the University of Massachusetts Cranberry Station has performed an experiment out on cranberries last year, 2019, and again, this year on blueberries with a setup, a mock setup of these panels, and studied the photosynthetically available radiation and determined, you know, it's only two years of study, but the impact has been minimal. So, part of these projects, in addition to them being designed with Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources and UMass weighing in through the predetermination application process, there are studies that are going to be ongoing with the University of Massachusetts Cranberry Station for similar projects. So this has to qualify, in order to get approved through the state, you have to meet some minimum criteria, as Sarah illustrated before. And some of those minimum criteria have to do with the amount of sunlight that is reaching any square foot of the operation, the cranberry bog operation. So it's not to exceed 50% of shading on any square foot. So the average here is below that, as far as shading goes. And the way that these trackers track, and that vines in general are shade tolerant, and we've been having, I mean, so there's a minimum criteria, and then there's actually looking forward. And some of the proactive things that we're hoping on the agricultural front, and this is to your question, Mr. Swenson, is more water retention during drought times because of the radiational cooling that's allowed because of the panels, and perhaps less radiational cooling during frost. So the goal is, you know, one of the goals agriculturally, is to see if we can avoid using resources that are precious to us, using extra water, and which happens during frost and which happens during irrigation. So a lot of these components are being thought of and are being documented as we go. And I do believe in five years from now, there'll be, not to put any pressure on UMass, but I do believe there'll be probably some best-managed-practice guidelines that are generated by UMass on how to grow to optimal production under these panels.
So I have a question. Thank you for that answer. I've done a little research myself on these, and a couple of observations I'll make was a couple of questions I have is about the height of the panels. Obviously, they do have to be higher to allow you to harvest underneath them, which raises a red flag around visual impact. So can someone talk on the engineering side of how high these panels are going to be?
Sure. This is Adam Schumacher, representing the E R E L C. The panels are, so these are single-axis tracking panel, or it's single-axis tracking racking that the panels are sitting on. And so the panels are flat when they're sitting on top of the racking, and then they tilt from east to west during the day. And so that's why they're oriented in a north-south direction. And so when the panels are flat, so pointing straight up, they are 10 feet high off the bog. But keep in mind that the bog sits two to three feet below grade typically. And so, you know, compared to the elevation of the bog road surrounding the bog, it's more like seven feet above that grade. And when the panel is at its maximum tilt, the highest edge of the panel is between 13 to 13 and a half feet high. So that would be, you know, subtract three feet from that would be the height above the grade of the bog roads.
So these panels tilt on an angle, but also horizontally, or I mean, rotationally, to trap the sun?
No, they just, so they stay in that north-south orientation, and their only movement is from, in the morning, they face roughly 45 degrees to the east. And then, as the sun goes over throughout the day, at noon, they're flat. And then, in the evening, they're 45 degrees tilted to the west.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
One of the things I did read was that cranberries tend not to turn as red when they don't get as much sun. Is that true? I'm just curious about that.
Well, Ian can talk to that more. Color was something that was studied in the UMass study that Ian referenced. And from, Ian, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I would be, I'm curious to hear where that may have come from. Just as a grower myself, learning what ripens things up, it's generally the cool nights in the fall is what really triggers color. Sunlight's important. Sunlight is important for photosynthesis in any plant. But yeah, I think there is, when you study the photosynthetically available radiation and the amount of space that's between these panels and the amount of diffuse light that's allowed to hit the vines and trigger photosynthesis, anecdotally, and backed up by some of the research, the observations, research that UMass has done, it does not look like it's going to impact color significantly.
But no, I'm sorry. I was just reading the bottom, and I read that, and I thought that was rather odd. And so I thought I'd throw it up just to... Have you been, has this project been in front of any other Wearham boards yet?
It has not. We plan to file with Conservation Commission shortly.
Have you been in front of any Carver boards yet?
We have our first hearing with Carver Planning Board tomorrow night. And we'll be filing with Carver Conservation Commission after that.
What powers these, the tilting action?
There's a motor. So you can see how each each of those arrays, or you know, there's separate arrays that you can kind of, you can see the outline. Maybe, Sarah, if you could sort of circle one of the individual arrays from east to west. Yep, like that, and then the larger one below it. So like, that entire array has a single drivetrain going down the middle of the rows. And there's a small electric motor that drives, that moves that drivetrain throughout the day, you know, just like a quarter, you know, a quarter or a half of an inch at a time every 10 minutes or so to make the panels tilt.
I have a question. I had my hand up. I'm not sure if it's a good time.
If you can't see, oh, I do see some hands up. Hold on. Is there any other questions right now from the board members? I didn't see who had the hand up first, so... I could just go with the top of the list, and I'll start with Slavin.
Good evening. I'm speaking, obviously, as a selectman, just so you understand. We have, I can't remember the woman's name exactly. I think it was Deborah. I forget her last name. She was one of the directors of the Cranberry Station in Wearham. She came before us probably five years ago, maybe, to talk about the ability to actually grow crops under solar fields, and that's something they were working on, and it had tremendous potential. I'd just like to express my feelings that I think this is an excellent project and will work really well. But I'm doing that, this myself personally, not as a selectman as far as recommending, but it did come before us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next one on my list is Meg Sheehan.
Sure. Hi, thanks for the opportunity to comment. I noticed that the site plan review materials say in two locations that the project does not generate any greenhouse gas emissions. Actually, solar projects do generate greenhouse gas emissions, according to the Energy Information Administration. I'm wondering if you can provide a life cycle emissions analysis of that?
I don't know if you have that calculations.
So there are no emissions produced during the operation of the project. I think maybe the only place where emission would be associated with the project is with the manufacturing of the equipment that's used. So I don't think a life cycle analysis of the greenhouse gas emissions associated with the equipment of the equipment would be relevant to the site plan approval here. And I think, by far and away, if emissions is something that you're concerned about, then solar energy is about as low emissions as possible with any electric generating source. So if... about as low emissions as, as possible uh, with any electric generating source. So if, if the goal is to reduce emissions, then uh, solar project should be encouraged.
Can I answer your question?
No, not really, because, no, it doesn't. I would uh, request the opportunity to um, submit scientific information to show that solar panels such as this, solar energy does emit greenhouse gas emissions. It's really important to look at the entire life cycle of, of these products, including um, the end life of them, because they do have a greenhouse gas impact on the planet. And they're not zero emission as these consultants keep stating in their reports under oath. Um, which gets to the question of um, the what, what happens with this project if the cranberry use ends? You indicated that the um, maybe subsidy program ended if the land was no longer used for agriculture. So what happens if the land is no longer farmed? The solar stays, but is there a bond or a decommissioning? That occurs at that point or at the end of the life cycle of the project?
The decommissioning that is normally part of the permit applies to the life cycle of the solar array. And if you uh,
But he said.
If you wanna, yeah, stick to everything you could, you could crush most uh, hybrid automobiles too.
Well, I'm just trying to get at his point that when the agricultural use ends, the solar project ends, which is what he said.
Sorry.
So that's a little unclear, but.
You, you kind of broke up. I don't know if anybody else caught you.
I did not think we were breaking up.
Okay, well, um, I still don't have an answer to the question about, you know, he said if the agricultural use ends, the project is no longer viable. Does that just mean that it doesn't get the agricultural subsidies that go along with this project?
Adam, do you want to speak to that if Mr. Chairman would like us to?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of the subsidies associated with it. So if you would like to answer, that would be great.
Uh, smart pro, in order to continue receiving the um, payments under the smart program, uh, the project needs to maintain its agricultural operations. And I think what Ian was saying is that if the project is no longer receiving smart payments, pro, or payments on the smart program, then the project will no longer be viable. And so if, if, if the project's no longer viable, then it would be decommissioned.
So I mean, you were just saying that the cranberry industry, cranberry industry is in trouble. What, what, how does that impact the viability of this use that's so closely tied to the cranberry operation?
Yeah, that's exactly why the um, Commonwealth has been so supportive of this idea is to help struggling farmers maintain the viability of their farms. So the, what the solar project does is provide um, a fixed and um, and certain stream of revenue that allows for the agricultural operations to um, remain economically viable uh, despite fluctuations in the cranberry market. Uh, so that's why uh, a lot of growers are interested in this and pursuing it. Because at times like this, when cranberry prices are very low, a project like this helps to fill in the gap and, and allow um, for farming to continue. So it, the, and if um, one of, one of the reasons that this is coming to fruition now uh, is in 2016, there was a, a cranberry revitalization task force that was uh, implemented. And uh, one of the recommendations that came out of that was um, utilizing renewable energy uh, on uh, you know, on, on farms, particularly cranberry bogs, to help provide uh, sustainable and long-term revenue. And so um, you know, that the Commonwealth, the growers uh, see this as an opportunity to um, keep farming rather than um, the alternative, which is to uh, turn uh, cranberry bog or the upland surrounding the cranberry bog into a conventional solar project, um, thereby removing the agricultural use. So this program in itself is uh, meant to encourage continued agriculture and, and it, it requires it.
George, if I may, um, at what rate of production um, prior to the installation of the array and then after the installation of the array, is the bog considered no longer uh, viable? I mean, if they produce one cranberry a year, is that considered a viable uh, cranberry bog in the eyes of the program? Or do they have to maintain, you know, a minimum percentage of the uh, production prior to?
Uh, yeah, there's no specific yield requirement because there are so many different things that can affect production um, in any given year. Uh, you know, from the weather to insects to, you know, the, the number of things that farmers deal with or growers deal with on a um, all the time. Um, so for that reason, they did not institute a specific yield requirement, but um, we are uh, required to use uh, best management practices. And so we are adhering to uh, growing, using best management practices and um, and we have to report uh, activity on the farm and yield to um, the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Energy Resources. Um, so that they can um, maintain a watch over the site and ensure compliance with the program.
Thank you. Um, I see uh, Harington Wapinaw, I don't know who that is, but if you could identify.
Melissa Ferretti. Sorry, it's a long name. Thank you for allowing me to comment. Um, I'm just curious um, if there has been any archaeological surveys done. There appears to be uh, some archaeological sites nearby. And if so, where would we acquire a copy of that survey if there has been one done and that has been considered for this project?
If you, if anyone could answer that.
To my knowledge, there has not been any archaeological surveys done as part of this particular project, given the fact that the um, work is proposed on previously disturbed area.
So you don't, you don't plan to do one, then you're saying?
No.
George, I have a question, if I could. Out of curiosity, more than anything.
Sure.
Um, I'm just wondering if maybe this is for Ian or um, perhaps Mr. Meredith. Are these bogs harvested by water picking? Uh, and if so, uh, what impact will there be once the solar array is in place? What impact will it be on the harvesting uh, operation that would take place here? Be on the harvest should take place here?
Uh, yes. Good question. Yeah, I'm getting feedback here.
I'm getting feedback here.
Can you hear me all right?
Can you hear me all right?
You're gonna echo.
Uh, I can try to answer. Um, that's better. Uh, good question. So these were, these are water harvested cranberry bogs and they'll continue to be water harvested cranberry bogs. Um, there's, there are strategic places where uh, Mr. Meredith harvests the fruit. Um, traditionally, there's enough space on the dike roads to allow for a tractor trailer truck and a berry pump. Um, so those areas were specifically left open still, so that there's, there's enough room to corral fruit and uh, pump it off from those sections.
And these bogs we're doing it on, um, they're not low yielding bogs. They're all, um, you know, some of the most recent hybrid varieties there are out there. Um, some of them are, some of the most highest yielding, I believe, in the state. Um, so it's not like, it's basically just kind of letting me stay in business and do what I love. I'm not trying to put house lots in. I'm not trying to dig water holes. I'm just farming and doing what I love.
I think I heard it in earlier uh, session or something that you don't intend to fence this site. Is that accurate? I didn't.
Um, I think, Mr. Chairman, we have, since we last spoke, probably at the department head meeting, maybe, was when we last talked about the options for fencing. Um, I think we are reconsidering um, fencing the array itself rather than just the equipment pads. Um, if so, that will be part of our revised plan package for the board's consideration.
Yeah, it's actually noted in executive summary under 3.7 that there's 28 acres, roughly a million 219,000 square feet of fenced property. So it, it is already noted in that.
You know, if, I, I'm not particularly looking for fence. I think that the more natural you can make it, the better.
Yeah, we'll clarify in our next, in our.
I made comment about that in my uh, letter to the board. Because they had specifically asked for a waiver from that requirement under site plan review. But I can find no section in, in the chap, Article 15, that gives you the authority to actually make that waiver or that grant. So I think they, uh, in order to get relief from that, it'd have to go to the Board of Appeals to get a variance on the fence. I'm not disagreeing with what you say, given the location of it. But it is a part of the zoning bylaw uh, under site plan review. And I don't think that the, the board has the authority to grant that waiver.
Mark that down as something to visit in the uh, solar bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think it would be nice to not have this project fenced in because, you know, it does add another layer of um, constraining factor to the grower. You know, right now it's, it's wide open. Um, of course, the, the equipment pads would be fenced as required, but um, you know, I, I think that we can make that happen if that's a requirement, um, or if the board determines that's a requirement. Um, you know, I think, given the the fact that the work is proposed on the bogs itself, which are essentially surrounded by a boat, uh, you know, a series of ditches. It's, and the, you know, electrical equipment would be at a higher elevation than the conventional array, you know, safety wise. It's not necessarily a huge concern. Um, and the fact that there were, you know, the adjacent properties are wooded and wetland um, areas, I think, you know, adds to that. But um, you know, again, it is a, it's a wide open, flat expanse of space that, you know, we could add a fence if that's a requirement. So we'll, we'll revisit that on our response to the peer review comments and our revised plan. And we'll, we'll make that clear next time around.
Uh, Charlie, this is Richard. Um, are you confident that you've got, that you uh, understand this correctly? That the ZBA would have to do the variance if there was going to be no fence?
Yeah, I'm fairly comfortable with it, Richard, because um, the planning board, unless it's specifically um, written into the zoning bylaw that you have the authority to waive the uh, requirements, that you don't have the authority, that it only can be granted through the Board of Appeals and a variance request.
Okay, good.
Saying that in this particular case, it may not be warranted. Uh, I think when the bylaw was written up for um, solar projects, it was probably with the understanding that most of them were written for upland areas. Uh, and you wanted to keep wildlife and so forth out of the areas. That's probably why it was written. And I don't think that anybody foresaw that you were going to be uh, having an application such as this. But nevertheless, it is a part of the zoning bylaw and you have to request a variance from the Board of Appeals to get beyond that. So that's, that's the way I understand it. Um, and I've looked at it before I wrote it in to try and be sure that I wasn't saying something erroneous and I couldn't find anything.
Good. Appreciate that. Cause I, I will echo what George said. Uh, if this was to come through fruition, I'd hate to see a fence going up there.
Yeah, we're constantly talking about no fences disrupting wildlife traffic. And this would be a perfect opportunity to, to act on that and not, not put a fence up.
So that, that's on, that's on us to deal with our bylaws, but just, we don't, we don't need to spend any more time on that now.
Well, I uh, I, I find your uh, new wrecking assembly ingenious. I, I think that's uh, it looks promising with that east-west tracking and as long as it stays functional. I know earlier renditions of putting racks on cranberry bogs were quite different. They were, they were put in the same manner as a large land-mounted solar and, you know, talking to various growers, all you're gonna grow under there is vines. So this, this looks more promising.
Yes, the, and the, the research that um, the UMass Cranberry Station did was based on the tracking design. And the results from that were uh, were, were promising. So um, yeah, thanks for that comment. We're excited to see the results.
You're not cutting down mature forest. You're not really altering the surface below the panels. So you're, you know, you're still maintaining the photosynthesis going on under there. Looks like a good uh, good compromise.
George, could I ask another technical question?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Meredith, how deep is the peat on your cranberry logs, generally speaking? I know it varies, but what is it roughly?
It varies on cer- certain spots. I mean, a lot of the newer ones are all in upland. Maybe some of that, the bigger one might be somewhere, I don't know, uh, 15 feet maybe in the middle. But then you'll hit gravel on the edges. Um, so it's kind of really all over the place. And I know the guys have uh, done a lot of testing with that. And I think they have a pretty good idea of how to get that stable and was the one, I believe they did some tests and pole tests on some other bogs in Carver that um, are going up.
So as, as you put these in, you're going to be taking the peat depth into consideration for stability of the panels and what impact the wind might have on that stability?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. In, in order to um, meet the uh, the structural requirements, we, we need to do um, pole tests, push, push-pull tests, like Brett was mentioning. Um, and in order for the um, the racking manufacturer to provide us with their warranty, we need to demonstrate that uh, we meet all of the relevant uh, wind and snow loading uh, with the, the, the subsurface conditions at the site. So we are expecting some areas of deep, uh, deeper peat, like 15 feet, like Brett mentioned. We actually, uh, two projects in Carver um, that are about to start construction, we ran into peat depths there of um, close to 30 feet. And we're able to um, overcome that with just using longer piles. Um, and, and there's not the, the single axis trackers, you know, are not holding up um, a lot of weight. It's um, those rows are just um, uh, rows of single panels. And there's about one pile for every four to five panels. So it's, it's not a lot of weight that's on the, on the foundations. Um, so there, despite the, the length of those piles and being raised in the air, they are, they, they are able to uh, meet those uh, the structural requirements.
Okay. Your, your plan showed a multiple types of piles. Um, is that true? I saw one indication that some of the piles had to be 15 inches in diameter. Um, are you using all the same type or is it a variety depending on the depth of peat?
That's right. It's a, it's a variety. Well, right now, we've That's right. It's a, it's a variety. Well, right now we've just, we've put forward, um, you know, the the options essentially, and when we complete the geotechnical testing, um, that will dictate the type and size of piles that will be used. It's possible that we would use, um, you know, two different types of piles within the the site, but more likely than not, we'll use the same type. But we wanted to put, uh, you know, the the options in there, um, just to, so that, you know, you could see that the different considerations we have. Um, but and and ultimately, the decision will be based on the, uh, the geotechnical report.
Okay, that's that's helpful. Thank you.
Now, do we have, I see a couple of hands still up. I don't know if, um, you had other comments or, uh?
Yeah, yes, I have a comment. Joe Falconeri.
Yep.
Um, you guys mentioned the fences. My question was about the fence as well. Um, this site borders the Wee Weanic River. Um, it's a really important river. I think all of us realize that. It's actually state listed priority habitat directly budding this bog. I'm hoping maybe there is not going to be chain link fence around this site. And have you guys thought about that?
I think ideally we agree with you. We would love to not fence it. If in the end.
Would you, would you be restricted against doing that because it is bordering priority habitat?
I think the, what we would do if if it is required that we do need to fence it, we would certainly, um, include a wildlife gap in any kind of fencing, uh, security fencing. Um, typical of a lot of these types of projects to help alleviate that. But I think we just have to take a look at that and speak with the board a little bit further and and Charlie a little bit further to get to really understand what the requirements on fencing are for this type of project. As I think, I don't know who said it, um, one of the members, I think that's the way the solar bylaw was written didn't necessarily account for a project like this. So, um, I think we just need to figure out if if it's required or what the steps may be to not have it. Or, you know, if we do have to have it, maybe make a, um, you know, have that bottom six to eight inches open to allow for critter movement.
Yeah, I mean, from a case specific standpoint, I mean, I think we all know this is completely surrounded by the Wee Weanic River. And and I think that's really important to to consider with this proposal. Thank you.
Given the affection wildlife has for the new berry varieties, you probably get increased production by fencing it.
That could be true.
Well, we we want to let the ecology dictate some things here too as well.
No, I I would prefer not to see any of them fenced really, but that's just me. I have no further questions at this time, George. This is Richard. All right, and I see Ms. Sheen still has a hand up, but she wished to comment further.
Um, yes, I have a question about stormwater runoff. Um, I know that you're building infiltration basins and, uh, ponds. And that there is a long list of chemicals that are discharged by a solar farm operations such as this, a hundred acres. Um, and that the receiving waters are impaired. There is a TMDL for the Wee Weanic River, as you indicated in your report. What is going to be the impact of the combined discharge from the irrigation return flows and pesticide and fertilizer use of the bogs combined with the runoff from the solar fields and the associated transformers and the chemicals that are used to, um, keep the solar field going?
Well, I I can speak to the solar side of it. So, um, I I don't agree with the assertion that there are, that there's chemical runoff from solar fields. Um, the solar panels themselves are inert. When water hits the solar panels, the only thing that comes off of solar panels is water. Um, the equipment pads, um, have, uh, you know, transformers with, um, self contain, with containment systems for any oil within the transformers. Um, so, uh, and there's, there's nothing that comes off of the inverter. So again, I I don't, I don't agree with with that assertion. The store, as Sarah can, um, speak to, I I believe we did includes a small amount of um, stormwater basin for the, um, the to 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 account for the the, um, equipment pads. But, you know, I'll let Sarah speak to that. And then in regards to the, um, runoff from the cranberry bogs, it will be more or less the same as it is now. Sarah, do you want to speak to the, um?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, Meg, your connection is really bad.
All right, I'll turn my camera off. I've read many, many Beals and Thomas solar field reports, and they all describe the laundry list of chemicals that are contained in the runoff from ground mounted solar projects such as this. So I am correct that there is runoff. Um, I'm scrolling through your report to see where it's described here, but maybe Sarah can address that.
No, I mean, I don't, off the top of my head, I'm not, I'd have to look into it. Megan, get back to you or get back to the question, maybe through our peer review response. Where Mr. Rowley had some questions related to stormwater, so that would have to be addressed in that manner, I would think. If that's appropriate from the board's perspective.
Just an observation, I, you know, they don't create any more runoff than what would normally land there. That would go with the able uncontaminants too, washing off them. They would, they would still end up on the same site, so I don't know why.
With all due respect, that is, with all due respect, that's not true. And I I'm happy to provide documentation. I'll submit some written comments.
Meg, this is Richard Swenson. I'd be very interested in seeing that. I've been trying to do a little research, uh, here during this discussion on some of the other issues that you brought forward. So, uh, if you do have any documentation about, uh, solar farms creating, um, greenhouse gases, I'd like to see it or, or, the contamination you're talking about now, I sure would like to see it. It'd be important for me to know that.
I'd be happy to submit some Beals and Thomas reports for other solar projects in the region that described the chemicals contained in the runoff.
I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Okay.
Chairman, we've never, uh, seen any reports, I think, on Wareham once that Beals and Thomas has done that included a list of chemicals. So if there's anything out there that the the board should know, uh, perhaps it would be appropriate to have that submitted to the board as well. Um, I know we've talked about sediment and so forth and 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 containment structures and infiltration areas and that type of thing. Making sure that we put the same amount of water back in the ground that, uh, we disturbed by the removal of trees, et cetera. But we've never talked about chemical compounds to the best of my understanding. So anything that's out there, uh, especially with due respect to this one, uh, would certainly be beneficial going forward. Um, my comments with respect to runoff had to do more with the, um, removal of the panels and the piles and so forth. Uh, should it come to that in the future? And what impact it might have on, uh, water that's contained within the bog and their, uh, discharge of water from the bog through their uh, ditches and inflown structures and so forth, eventually to the Wee Manic River and what impact it might have there. But that is a, um, I think, an issue that the Conservation Commission needs to look at seriously because it's an indirect discharge, not a direct discharge to the Wee Manic, but an indirect one. But it does have, uh, potential impact. So, um, I think that's, that's something that we can talk about later on. But it is something that I brought up as a part of my review to the board. But I'm not aware of the compound issue, so I'd like to see that too.
Okay, going to provide it for us hopefully. My, uh, am I correct in assuming the topography is not going to change?
That's correct. There is some grading proposed at the spur access road, for lack of a better term, just to get that road so that it's an appropriate grade from the road down to the bog level.
And the, uh, the irrigation and drainage for the bog itself, is that current under, uh, best management practice? It's not a flow through? It's been?
Yes, everything's kind of pretty much tailwater recovery and there's a NRCS plan, um, on the property farm plan.
A little amount of regrading that is on the project, but it's in the town of Carver. Uh, it's not in Wareham. But the only portion that is in Wareham would be the access road. And, um, uh, Sarah, I don't know that you discussed it, but in my report, I recommended that the road be relocated to a more flat location just to the right of the hill that it was going through. I don't know whether you can address that or not, but, uh, it would mean that the slope of the of the road going in would be much less if you could relocate it a little bit to the, I'll call it the southwest of where you have it now.
Yes, that's, we got that comment, Charlie. We're working on it now. We agree that we can soften that grade a bit.
So at this particular time, the board members have any questions they need, uh, addressed?
No, I'm I'm good, George.
Are you still, uh, applicant still going through Charlie's review letter? Is that what I, what I'm hearing?
Yes, um, our plan is to have a response, um, prepared and and back to the board and to Charlie prior to the next hearing. Um, in two weeks, we've gone through it and we are currently working on it. Again, I just didn't want to submit anything prior to this meeting since we hadn't had the opportunity to all discuss the project as it was submitted quite yet. So, um, we are planning on getting that information back to the board. I'd say early next week.
So at this particular time, you'd like to continue to March eighth, is that?
We would, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion, George, to continue the public hearing for the solar energy installation at, uh, zero North Carver Road until March eighth.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
I.
Both mics. Richard.
I.
And I. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I have is a public hearing for special permit modification, Wareham Retail Management, number one Seth Toby Road, map eighty seven lot one. Ken, do you have all the, uh, information on that?
Yes, I do. Um, and I can read the, uh, public hearing announcement if you want.
Sure.
Notice of online public hearing. The planning board of Wareham will hold an online public hearing on February twenty second, twenty twenty one at six P M. To consider petition number two dash twenty one for a site plan review modifications from the requirements of article fifteen of the Wareham zoning bylaws for Wareham Retail Management LLC of three oh two hundred Telegraph Road, suite two oh one five Bingham Farms, Michigan. Seeking to revise the current approved site plan in the location of building number three in order to accommodate a restaurant with drive through pickup located at one Seth F Toby Road, Wareham Mass, assessors map eighty seven, lot one in the CS zoning district.
Thank you, Ken. This is, um, what's commonly referred to as the oat parcel, oat parcel at Walmart.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is, uh, Lindsay Wilson, counsel for the applicant Wareham Retail Management. Um, don't know why I'm not showing up on the video. I'm Wilson RL on there. But, uh, yeah, I can introduce, uh, why we're back before you, where things stand and, uh, the basis for, uh, this hearing. Again, Lindsay Wilson on behalf of the applicant. Also tonight, we have, uh, Brandon Tram, uh, on behalf of All Red USA. Uh, civil engineer Derek Redgate is on the call. Traffic engineer Sean Kelly for the project, architect Bo Nguyen. And on behalf of the, uh, prospective user Kathy McVane of Chipotle. Um, this has been really an ongoing discussion and, uh, rollout of the development over the past two years with your board. Um, it's a three building development that, uh, has been phased, uh, building at a time as tenants have been identified and, uh, locked into the site. Um, you've worked with us on two prior occasions, the initial site plan approval related to, uh, the dental building, building two. Uh, and then we came back to you last year in connection with the Starbucks. And now we're trying to finish off the, the project with, uh, building three and have the anchor tenant for that, uh, as Chipotle. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Derek Redgate to run through the modifications from the plan you approved last year. Um, and discuss any details or changes since the discussion that we had on a preliminary basis several weeks back, uh, with both Ken and Charlie. So Derek, are you on the call and available?
I am on the call. Thank you, Lindsay.
Great.
Hello, Derek Redgate, civil engineer from, uh, High Point Engineering. Um, I'm going to try to share my screen here. I hope this works. This is, um, I can see it up. Can someone confirm that?
Yes, I see it.
I can see it.
Great. So, uh, yeah, as as Lindsay, um, as Lindsay described, we, um, this is, this is the overall site plan. And when we first came before you for site plan approval, it was for a very similar development. Three, three buildings, uh, with parking. And over the course of, uh, establishing tenants, it's it's been built in three different phases over the past two years. So to bring you up to speed to your memory, the first building that was constructed is the Aspen Dental Building, which was in the middle. At the time of that construction, um, I would estimate we we constructed maybe eighty percent of the infrastructure for the project. Um, we knew that, we knew the rough size of building number one and number three. Um, we're going to stay the same. So in general, the parking, the circulation, the, uh, water systems, the sewer systems and all the, um, uh, stormwater management systems. Uh, not completely, but in general, I would say was eighty percent, seventy to eighty percent constructed under phase one when we were constructing the Aspen, um, dental building in the middle. Since then, phase two had constructed, um, which is the, uh, which you'll remember is the Starbucks building. Uh, we received a variance for the, uh, for the drive through. And, um, we did the same process we're doing here with a site plan modification of the original, um, the original approval. So that has been constructed. Uh, it's not open yet. I think it's ready to go maybe in the next month or so, you're able to, uh, maybe get a, uh, a fresh Starbucks coffee. So now, uh, in the area of three and over to the right of the screen, sort of the same process, we'd like to, um, be build a two tenant, uh, building, which would be on the left side, would be a Chipotle, uh, Mexican grill. Similar to the Starbucks, it would have a. Similar to the Starbucks, it would have a, have a pickup window. The pickup window is a little different than a drive-through, which you know, we can, we can talk further about, but just in terms of the site plan. What we're here for tonight is you can see if a, a thin red line. That was the original retail building that we proposed in this location. So basically, that's a pad site. It's, it's, it's grassed over. It's, it's, you know, ready to go for a contain, more of a contained area of construction. And in order to accommodate this new tenant Chipotle, we made some modifications to the site plan and to the building itself. So the, the red represents what was permitted previously. And then the new building is, is to give you an indication of the change. So it's been slid, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty feet towards Cranberry Highway. It's slightly smaller, so the footprint has been reduced. The numbers are in my letter, but it's approximately two thousand square feet. We have, we've added the pickup lane. So in this area, on a given nerve of my screen, that would be where you would place your order mobily and pick up, but you would enter the pickup window through a driveway with a bypass lane. The other change to this site plan is we've removed some of the spaces that were immediately at the front entrance. And that was to accommodate, you know, a wider patio area. Restaurants typically have an outdoor seating area, which is beneficial in COVID days. And one more change that we've proposing is an area in the back, which would provide loading area for the new building as well as, as two dumpsters for the Chipotle building. The Chipotle restaurant, which has a dedicated trash dumpster and also a dedicated recycling, recycling dumpster. So again, we're here. You know, it's, it was an approved project. It's been through modifications as we've gone through each individual building's construction. And so now we're here for the third building. And the modifications to that, I think we, we, we fully recognize there's a chicken before the egg issue here where on Wednesday night we are going to be in front of the zoning board of appeals to talk about what they will require of us as far as as allowing the drive-through pickup window, whatever you want to call it, variants. We have a variance on the property for the Starbucks, but we haven't been in front of the zoning board of appeals yet to discuss discuss the variance and what they would want us to to get for the Chipotle building. So we're here with you.
Just a comment on that procedural framework. The way that the zoning board handled the Starbucks development previously was they essentially determined that it was only their domain whether or not to grant the variance that was requested for the drive-through and deferred any discussion or review of site plan to the planning board, knowing that we were coming back for modification and site plan review approval. So in, in assuming that they're going to take a similar vein on expanding our variance or, or quite frankly, confirming that it applies to building three as well. And that they're going to defer on the site plan, we wanted to get on the hearing kind of in parallel track with you guys. So that we'll have your feedback, theirs hopefully on Wednesday night, and then be able to go forward with you for further discussion as last time it was pretty much a, a one-meeting up or down vote on the variance. And then just two other quick comments, especially while this is zoomed in like this. In addition to the red footprint of what was previously approved by your board directly next to the dumpster for building number two, the dental office. That had been where the, the pass lane and the drive aisle is. That is where the dumpster was previously approved. So that's the impetus for the kind of curved cutout in the rear of the building there to replace what was approved and where we're now putting the pickup lane. And then just lastly, and I know that Kathy could provide much more color and detail for anyone who's not familiar with Chipotle. There's a huge difference between the pickup window and a traditional fast food drive-through where there is no order board. There's no queuing and placing an order and driving through on the whim. This is solely for someone who's called in or perhaps even walked in and then went back to their car and when their order is ready, can pick it up at the window instead of returning to the interior of the building. So it's, it's very much less of a traffic increase for the building itself as it's not a point of order of solely of order pickup. Yeah, we certainly can answer questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, happy to answer questions. We also have the traffic engineer Sean Kelly is on the call, who there is some differences in, in the traffic generation for this use than the original. And then as Lindsay mentioned, Kathy McVane is on the call from Chipotle and also Bo Nguyen. If there's any questions about the architecture, the architecture will be similar to the other two buildings. But any specific questions he'd be happy to, to answer.
So this is Richard. I have, I'd like to hear both from Kathy and Sean, the traffic engineer. Sean, could you just describe for me what you envision the, the, the typical pickup window traffic pattern?
Sure, absolutely. Again, for the record, Sean Kelly with Van Ass Associates. On behalf of the team, thank you again for having us tonight. If it pleases the, the board, I do have a brief presentation. If I can screen share, I'll put it up on the screen for you. I think you may have to jump out. Does everyone see this?
I see it.
Okay, great. Let me get into a I can get this. I guess this works. So you know, first off, I think everyone's familiar with the project site. Again, we're looking at the old parcels to the existing Walmart store located at the intersection of Cranberry Highway, Route twenty-eight with Seth Toby Road. Toby Road is a local road under town jurisdiction where Cranberry Highway is a state road under the jurisdiction of D O T. And you know, and as such, this project will be subject to a modification to the access permit that's been granted for the project. Today, the site access works from really from two ways. There's a, there's an unsignalized four-way driveway that serves the, the primary Walmart parking lot as well as the project that also serves the Wareham Marketplace project located across the street with the Aldi supermarket. Additionally, there's a, there's a limited egress full access driveway right off of Route twenty-eight where motorists can make left turns in, right turns in, and right turns out. But left turns out are restricted at this area. So anyone that wants to make a left to continue further north on twenty-eight does so by accessing Toby Road and making the left at the light. We, we conducted a traffic study in accordance with all state and industry guidelines. You know, we looked at the intersections that were evaluated as part of some of the prior work. And essentially, it's the, the main signal at twenty-eight and Toby Road, and then the two again driveways that serve the plaza. When we did this assessment, you know, we, we didn't go out and collect new traffic counts. And the, and the reason we did that is because the the volumes out there in the road state typically we're finding are, are lower, certainly during some peak periods because of COVID. So what we did instead is we relied on the twenty nineteen, November twenty nineteen assessment that was done for the Starbucks use because those volumes weren't, wouldn't be impacted by COVID. We, we did basically follow the same methodology we've used in some of the prior assessments. You know, we accounted for growth in the area. Both things that are approved and under construction, including the Aspen Dental, the redevelopment of the Max gas station across the street, additional commercial space within Wareham Marketplace. So you know, the volumes that we collected, we adjusted to account for that traffic. With respect to the project itself, what we typically do when we look at these developments is we rely on data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, so the I T E. And the I T E gives you various land use codes and rates that let you predict with a, you know, a certain degree of accuracy, how much traffic you can expect. You know, based on the size and intensity of a development. For this particular use, the I T E data, which is for land use code nine thirty fast casual restaurant. You know, it's intended for restaurants that don't offer table service that have, you know, more, you know, fresh food. You order at the counter and eat. We felt the data, thought the data was a little low. So what we did is we went out and counted a, an existing operational Chipotle that provides a drive-through window actually up in Leamester, Mass. This site is located just outside of a major commercial shopping center, including a mall and a supermarket. So it's, it's fairly similar in terms of the, the activity that you see around it where we have, you know, Wareham crossing right next door and also the Walmart use. And what the data showed us was that, you know, in terms of the, the overall volume, in terms of customers, in a weekday evening, we, we've viewed about fifty-five customers in, about sixty customers out. The Saturday midday, which is the other busy time, was about, about the same, about sixty and sixty out. So you know, that's the kind of the range of traffic that you see out there is, you know, a car arriving and a car leaving every minute in, in the busiest hour. We took out the trips that would be eliminated, you know, by the commercial use that was already approved. There is a, in an approval in hand to build retail space here. That space would get eliminated by the, by the, the restaurants. So that was deducted. And then we took out, basically, there's two, two categories of trip making that aren't new trips. You have internal trips where people will be going to the Walmart or going to the, you know, whether it's Aspen or any of the other uses on site and they make a trip to Chipotle. You know, both customers and employees. And then you also have pass-by trips, which are trips that are already out there. You know, they, the shopping in the area or they drive Route twenty-eight for their commuter patterns, whatever it may be. And that accounts for a certain percentage as well. So when you net all those things out, you know, what we're looking at in terms of new traffic to the area, it's about twenty vehicles arriving and twenty vehicles leaving during the peak periods. You know, a car every three minutes. When you break it out over the various modes of trap true to and from the site, you know, it doesn't really have a notable impact on operations. We're projecting that the traffic signals delays are going up by about a second per vehicle and similar delay increases on the driveways. So with respect to the questions to how much traffic they do, you know, based on what we've seen, and again, the, these numbers are significantly higher than the I T E numbers. It's about a car a minute total, and then about a car every three minutes in terms of actual new traffic. One of the things that, you know, Derek pointed out is that we, we did also monitor the, the drive-through lane. And the, the drive-through lane for the Chipotle is significantly different than other uses, including, you know, the Wendy's across the street or what you typically would see at a, at a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks. And that they, you can't order the, the food when you're there. You need to do it either on your phone app or on your computer and, and place an online order. And then when you go, you pick it up. So it eliminates the, the payment activity, eliminates the process of having to pick out what you want to order. It eliminates the time you're in line waiting behind someone. You're essentially showing up and you've already paid and you've, you have a number, you pick up your food and go. And because of that, the queuing in the drive-through lane is much less than what you would see in a typical drive-through, even like McDonald's or Burger King. We, we saw that during the peak hours, the average queue ranged from anywhere from two to three vehicles. And again, this is the weekday evening, Saturday midday during your busy dinner and lunchtime. So I believe we're providing storage for, I think it's five vehicles, which, you know, we're confident would be sufficient to accommodate the peak demands of the project. So, you know, in conclusion, you know, the project's expected to generate less than one new trip per minute, you know, during the busiest hours as compared to what's previously been approved for the site is retail. Minimal increases to overall delays. We're talking about a second per vehicle typically. The fast food drive, well, the drive-through queues again are, you know, two to three vehicles far below what you would see at a fast food chain. Our recommendations essentially are to, you know, maintain the site access as it operates today and have all internal driveways that are designed applicable to the M U T C D design criteria, whether it's pavement markings, you know, signage, stop bars at internal intersections, things of that nature. As part of the prior approval, one of the things that we had talked about with the board was the fact that, you know, we really want to emphasize the use of the Route twenty-eight driveway, particularly for motorists that are destined either to Route twenty-eight southbound or, or, you know, one ninety-five Wareham Crossing areas to the south. So consistent with the prior recommendation, we're, we're recommending that there be signage on site that again, direct traffic to use that driveway and keep it off of Toby Road in particular, unless you have to make that left to go north. And then again, providing adequate queue storage for vehicles, which, you know, given that we're showing two to three, the current design provides for, for greater than that. And that's, you know, the, our, our study in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of the board might have. Thank you.
George, if I could, this is Mike King. Looking at the, at the layout of the, the buildings and such and the pass through for the pickup, is the exit of the pass-through driveway, for lack of a better term, is, is that going to be constructed in such a way that it's going to kind of guide people to go left across the front of that building as opposed to turning right toward the other buildings? So that it, it would kind of force them out toward that back driveway? Or is it just?
Eric, do you want to answer? I mean, essentially, that traffic pattern is exactly what we're talking about, where you'd come down the left side of the building and then just stayed at the left and left again to go back out that way.
Right, but is, is the exit of that, that path going to lend itself to pushing people that direction? Or are they still going to have the option to go right?
They would still have the option to go right. But, you know, internal circulation, it's certainly what the intent is. And certainly can be reemphasized via signage as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is Richard Swenson. To go along with what Mike said, I, I recently have been down to the site and drove around all the buildings many times and I'm, and I'm, I'm with Mike here. If there's some, some way that we can put a left turn only coming out of the pickup lane, do everything in our power to get traffic in and out of this place from Route twenty-eight as opposed to Toby Road. It's very awkward coming in there from Toby Road. And I think people, the good news there is, is that people will figure that out and figure out it's, it's a lot easier off of twenty-eight. But I would take it a step further than what Michael said. I, I would say coming out after you've picked up, you have to go left. It's, it's, it's a, it's a concentrated area there, and it's going to be even more so with the third building. So
Well, and with the layout of the building, Richard, there's not a lot of reason to go right. I mean, you're not going to go pick up lunch and go to Aspen Dental. And, and, and you can't get to the Starbucks from that direction because of the way that their drive-through is constructed. There's no way to get to the, to the, to the building. You'd have to go around the back anyway.
I, I agree. I, I, what I find is, is when, when I'm down there observing, I find that the entrance off twenty-eight is very unused.
Extreme. It's, it's underutilized by a lot.
Yes. So what, what I'm suggesting is there are some things here we could do from a traffic flow perspective that would promote using twenty-eight. If you have to come out of the drive, the pickup and have to take a left, you're going to quickly figure out, geez, I can, I can get out right there, bang, and I'm out of there. And maybe next time they're going to figure out that's the way to come in. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Just throw.
And, and that is the intent. We certainly I think a lot of the utilization of the twenty-eight ingress egress has been tied to this building. And once this is established and we have this anchor towards that end of the site, that coupled with what we can do as far as you know, directional signage requirements, what have you, hopefully is going to increase the traffic flow pattern in that direction, at least at this end of the site. That's, that's certainly the intent and we're certainly open to, you know, you know, making whatever changes are reasonable. Obviously we can't block off, you know, the, where there's connectivity between the different, uh, buildings because someone very well could, you know, go to Chipotle and then have a dental appointment or what have you. So there has to be some level of connectivity, but we're, we're on the same page with you as far as the intended traffic flow.
Oh, uh, not, all right, good. So I'm gonna change subject. The entrance to the pickup window. How wide is that right there?
Twelve feet.
Those feet.
As a casual observer, I'm going to scrape my, uh, my alloy wheels as I pull in there. It looks tight. It's just a novice.
Derek and I were having this discussion earlier today. It's a, it's a bit of a catch twenty two. If, if it's not designed with this kind of bump out, the concern was that you would get cars coming from both directions, turning in. And then there'd be merge issues potentially trying to get to the pickup window, whereas this really consolidates a, a, and makes it so there isn't going to be ever any competing cars coming in that way. Derek, I defer to you to expand on that, but, um, it's certainly a point in discussion.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I, I think it's ample, it's ample width. You, um, you know, you'd be coming in from the opposite, uh, side of this road. So the width, width wise, twelve feet is ample. I think what we were trying to, um, really show here that it is only one way. I think if you had it wider and two cars could get by, that you might see people cutting through the opposite direction. So that was, there's no real engineering standard we were trying to meet here, other than we felt it was, uh, the best way to funnel the traffic into what is really a pickup only, you know, roadway. That, that was really our, our thinking there. It could be a little wider, uh, but I'd like to keep it as sort of a single vehicle entrance.
Yeah, maybe if you just soften the radiuses.
Radius on the back, one behind it, right at dumpsters is real, real sharp.
Yeah, yeah. If they soften the radiuses, Richard, I think you'd be fine with that.
I'm, I'm with Mike Baptiste. The one, the radius on the dumpster side looks pretty, pretty acute.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I bump, jump in on that?
Oh, Charlie, I was going to ask you for your thoughts here.
I, I disagree with you on that for one reason. When you're coming from the upper portion of the, um, of the plan, say, coming in from that driveway that's on twenty eight and you're, you're traversing down that, you're going to be on the right hand side of the road. So although that curb radius looks very sharp, you're going to be on the opposite side of the, of the road making the turn. So you've actually got a lot more pavement there than it looks like. When you're coming from the other direction, uh, I don't know whether, Derek, whether you mirrored the radius there right at the intersection or not. It looks a little bit bigger on where you've got your cursor now. Yeah. Um, and I don't think that's a problem either. I, I would agree with you that you don't want to widen too much because you're going to get potentially traffic going both ways.
Well, to that point.
Want to being too sharp. I, I don't think it is.
To that point, Charlie, wouldn't that just reinforce the, the need to have the exit for that pickup lane? Kind of be just designed to push people to the left and the back across the building. Now you're not, nobody's going to go back up that road.
If, yeah, I, I guess it, it's a good question as to what the purpose of the bypass lane is. Other than if somebody gets a little nervous and they're in the bypass lane and all of a sudden they decide they don't want their, their food or something, they can scoot out. But you could redirect that to the left by putting the curbing in a, in a proper orientation so that forces somebody to turn left. And so they can't turn right. You could do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and the only other, only other comment I'd make on the, the traffic movements is that when you force people to make the turn out to the Cranberry Highway entrance, you have to merge into the second lane of traffic to get to the point where you can get to the light. If you stay to the right, you're going to end up going down Toby Road. So you have to cross traffic away from the lane that actually wants to get onto Toby Road coming south on Cranberry Highway. So there's a merging factor there that you have to take into consideration. So the more traffic you push out that way, but the more of a problem it's going to be with the merging of the traffic coming from route twenty eight south toward the south. Because this, I can't point to it. I wish I could do my cursor, but I can't. Yeah, where that cursor is right now, that's the lane that you have to get into in order to get to the light. The one that's on the extreme inside actually goes to Toby Road. So it, just bear that in mind that it forces people to get into that second lane of traffic to get to the light to go through the intersection.
Could I, if I could address, respond to that Charlie quick, could I share my screen again, Derek?
Yeah.
That's okay.
I'll do a stop share. Yep.
Thank you. I think, um, let me see if I can find it. Are you seeing Google Earth right here? Yeah, see, if you, if you see Charlie, we actually, you, you actually come out into the through lane that, that right turn lane doesn't actually open up until after you get onto twenty eight southbound. So you've got a, you've got a good stretch where you're in that through lane before it opens up. So we're not, we're not actually dumping traffic into the right turn lane. It, they, if you get into that through lane.
Sean, there's still emerging problem there because people coming from twenty eight on the left hand part of your screen, they're going to be in that right hand lane as they try to get into the lane that goes to Toby Road. So you've still got a merging problem there, even though you might be aligned with the second lane. You've still got a merging issue with people coming south.
Well, no, I mean, you'll, consistent with any stops and they're going, they, they will have to stop and wait for that traffic to go by, but it, but I just wanted to make sure that it's clear.
Or the right turn. Put out there, the more of a problem it will become. Whereas the other intersection, even though you're trying to, um, adjudicate some of the traffic on Toby Road, you at least they're forcing it to a signalized intersection immediately by getting onto Toby Road. But I think it's six of one, half a dozen or another with the amount of traffic and where it'll go. Think a little bit will depend on what the exact use of that retail space will be. Uh, you're only talking about Chipotle right now. You have, really haven't addressed the traffic that will be generated from the thirty eight hundred square feet of retail space that you have shown.
Well, we, no, we, we, we did do that, um, as part of the, the initial assessment. And in, in this subsequent one, we, we've always accounted for the traffic associated with, you know, the Aspen dental, the Starbucks a, and the retail space that still gets to be built. So that it is, that is, you know, cooked into the analysis, if you will.
Yeah, Sean's numbers were just distinguishing the change from the trip generation that was represented prior, uh, site plan approval.
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
I agree with that, Sean.
What is your, what is your peak, uh, business hour? What kind of numbers you project?
Well, busiest times for the restaurant would, would be your, you know, weekday evening between four and six when people are, you know, stopping by to grab dinner on their way home. And then your, your Saturday midday, but in typically, you know, twelve and one and one and two when people are getting lunch. What we found was that the, in the weekday evening, about two thirds of the traffic actually was, was drive through. So people are placing those online orders, you know, going through, picking it up and, and heading home. Whereas on the, during the Saturday midday, it was more of a fifty fifty split where about half of the customers took the food to go and then about half of them, you know, ate inside.
What about weekday noon? You haven't mentioned weekday noon.
Yeah, we typically, um, you know, don't evaluate the weekday lunchtime because it's, it's not as busy as the Saturday midday. I mean, if you think about, if you went out to Wareham Crossing, you know, do a, a weekday at, at lunch and looked at the volume of traffic out there versus a Saturday, it's, it's much higher. So we always try to look at the, the, the time periods when the, the, the combination of the, the existing traffic flow, the ambient flow on the, on the corridor, and then our volumes together are, are at their highest. And that, that works out that the busiest lunch is Saturday. Um, that's why we look at that one.
I can, I can just see that restaurant being very popular with the working crowd, uh, in the industrial park down Kendrick Road.
Oh, sure.
It's a, you know, it's a, it's a nice change from what we have, especially in West Wareham, um, especially with the younger crowd. They love Chipotle. And, um,
Hey, old guys like it too.
I, I, I like it too very much, Richard, but I noticed in, in the, in the crowd that works for me at the office, the overwhelming majority that ends up with Chipotle on their desk are the, the twenty somethings.
But the reason I ask is, do you think there's enough packing spaces for people to grab their lunch at the window and sit there and?
Well, can I, before you go there, that, that kind of ties in. How many, how many seats are we talking inside? This appears to be one of the smaller footprints of all the Chipotles I've been in, in terms of seating. Kathy, uh, welcome to Wareham, by the way.
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna see if I could find my floor plan. Thank you. And again, I'm Kathy McVane. So I'm the real estate manager for Chipotle. So I am kind of the initial person, um, when it comes to opening new Chipotles in New England. Typically we have about forty five seats in the restaurant, thirty five seats in the restaurant. Our footprint is twenty three hundred, twenty four hundred square feet. So we stay pretty small. About half the restaurant is the kitchen because we are a full restaurant. So we cook everything on site, no freezers, no microwaves. So really it's like a fifty fifty split between the restaurant, the machine of it, and then the seating in front. And this, we call it a Chipotle lane because of course we have to be a little bit different. But the Chipotle lane is, um, how we have been able to accommodate. First of all, it certainly helps with the parking because a lot of people do order online. And now they don't need to take up a parking spot to run in and grab their food. But it also still allows us to be the restaurant, which is what we are, which is where people come in and they want to sit and enjoy their, their dinner. Our turnover is very quick. Um, people come in, they eat, they leave. You know, I did the real estate for Starbucks for ten years and that was the opposite where people would stay all day and take up the parking and work and everything like that. So we have a pretty quick turnover with our customers. And then the pickup window just helps us get everybody through, through the restaurant, you know, as quickly as possible.
How long ago did you, did Chipotle start using the pickup window without the order board concept?
Yeah. So we have never been a traditional drive through. Um, the first thing we did was this, um, Chipotle lane concept. So as, as was already mentioned, um, and it's just kind of important to say there, there's no speaker posts. There's no menu board that shows the menu on a movie type screen. There's no money transacted through the window. It is all done on the app. You know, I never ordered on an app and I knew many people that only ordered on an app. So it just kind of shows the different way things are going. We opened our first Chipotle lane in New England in Leamester. And that was probably a year and a half ago. Um, and that was just a former mattress firm. We took an end cap and he put a window in and we circulated around the building. Um, and since then, and to be honest with you, a lot driven by COVID, the Chipotle lane has just become a very critical component of our restaurant. We were really lucky. We, we never had to close any restaurants. We kept everybody employed. I mean, those things are super important to me just to know that we were able to do that for this last year. Um, and one of the reasons is because we were opening some Chipotle lanes, we could get the people, uh, just pass it out the window, hands off, you know, and, and super safe, which is great for our employees as well as for the customer. So uh, the Chipotle lane especially, I mean, we'll still do urban stores where Chipotles aren't an option, Chipotle lanes aren't an option. But it's a critical component of how we want to serve our customers at this point because it's just proven very successful.
So it's really been the, the, the perfect tenant to find as we try to finish out this project in what is obviously the worst of times for retail and restaurant development. So, we, we really view it as a windfall to have Chipotle, uh, participating in the site and the development. And, you know, really a big key to both functionality during COVID and their concept, uh, going forward is this pickup window.
I asked, and you would probably have a better handle on what you need for parking. I recently went to the Wendy's across the street and, uh, you know, there was, you almost had to go around the building twice to park because the drive through and the limited parking kind of impaired the compromised the parking lot. And it struck me that if you had the dining room full and you had people that just wanted to pull into a parking space and eat their lunch or whatever. Uh, I was curious if there's enough spots there to.
Yeah, I mean, we have everything from twenty spaces to, to many spaces. A center like this, we kind of call it cheater parking. People are going to come into the restaurant and eat. And they're okay walking if they need to park, you know, a little bit further away. People don't typically eat in their car, um, just because we have plenty of seating inside. So they'll definitely, if they're going to come in and order, they're going to park their car, go in and order, have their, sit down and have their lunch and leave. If they're ordering on the app, it's typically because they're taking it to go and they're going to just take that bag and go home or go back to their office or wherever that may be. So certainly parking is critical to us and, and, you know, the landlord realizes, we wouldn't do something that we didn't feel comfortable had enough parking. But between the lot, that's us. And, and also important is co-tenancy. You'll see us next to Starbucks and sometimes in the same building. Uh, we do very different day parts. We're not open in the morning, so we don't open until, uh, ten forty five. So we're allowed to kind of balance that parking field. And so we kind of look at that as well. It's, it's who that co-tenant with it being Aspen. We know when their busy times are. So we feel confident that there's enough parking to operate the restaurant.
But I ask how many seats are in the building? Not the building, but in Chipotle.
Um, if, let me just open up my, it's probably about forty five, but just give me one quick second, please. I don't think, um, I don't. Oh, here we go. Do I have the floor plan? Hopefully I have it here. I mean, we're typically at about forty seats. I'm going to have to get you the exact seat count because I don't have the floor plan in front of me and I don't believe anybody else does either. But I will, let me just look and I'll follow up with the answer to that question.
Sure, Kathy, if, if any of your, um, if any of your real estate people have done any seat to parking slot analysis, um, I would very much like to see it if you have that available in the future.
Sure.
How about elevations? You got any, uh, building views available for us?
Yeah, I have, uh, if Bo has something, that's better to go by Bo, but Bo, I also have something.
Derek, why don't you, uh, why don't you pull up? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Bo's on here, guys.
Okay, I saw him earlier, I thought.
We have, we can show you guys, we can show everyone the standard elevations for the building. And then we're happy to kind of put together that, um, kind of that three D rendering that we did for the last, for the Starbucks project to, to really give you a good idea of how it's going to look. But I don't think that we have that yet.
Yeah, Brandon, that, that I was going to ask, that, that was very, very helpful. When we did the Starbucks to give everybody on the same page. So, um, I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that done immediately. Sorry, we didn't have it now.
Just to go back to parking for a minute, um, the parking regulations call for one space for every five seats. So if you had forty five, then you would need nine, nine parking spaces just for the seats in the restaurant. So you might want to consider that you're going to need a few more than that. If you're going to consider somebody picking up from the drive up window and then finding a parking space to sit down and eat. I just throw that out, but, um, I wanted to find out eventually how many seats you're going to need for the other portion of the building too.
Yeah. How do we do that, Charlie? When, when we don't even know what's going to go in there and what their demand is going to be?
Well, judging from what the number of parking spaces that I have right now and seeing it, it says that you need, uh, there's thirty eight hundred and fifty square feet in that second retail space. It's over a thousand. It's over a thousand, so that means that you need one space for every three hundred feet. And that comes out to be thirteen spaces. But if that were to be used for a restaurant, then you'd have to know the number of seats in the restaurant and divide that, or that take the number of seats and divide that by five to tell you how many parking spaces you actually need. So it depends on what the use is going to be, Richard.
Yeah, understood. And then I, just as a side note, then I look at the, at the layout. I count twenty-two spots in, on the, on the drawing, on the top right and the bottom right. And how do we count for what might be considered shared spots in front of Aspen Dental? Or the spots in the very back there behind the bioretention pond? Maybe they're considered employees.
Those are extra spaces that are to the left on the, on the drawing that you see. I would say right now, if there are twenty-two spaces there, that you've got enough for Chipotle and you've got enough based on just standard retail space, based on the parking design requirements in Article Nine.
Sure.
But if it's not, so long as it's not a restaurant, if it's a restaurant, then the number of spaces changes.
Just so, and just so everyone knows, as of now, as of now, there's no plan to do a restaurant there. If we did, we understand we would be coming back here. And I do believe that in that case, which I believe is highly unlikely, I think we do have potential parking spaces that we can add to the, to the north. Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's for future parking if we needed it.
Correct. We do, we do. I just pulled up on the screen our, our parking analysis. And we did, we did account for fifty spaces in the Chipotle without having, you know, the final floor plan. So as, if you look at the, at the entire shopping center retail development as a whole, we're required to have fifty-two spaces and we've provided seventy-four. Individually, they may not be right next to the, you know, the front door of each one, but that's, that's the amount of parking per, per Wareham's zoning parking regulations. And we would assume that if the, if the retail space next to the Chipotle, there's no intention of it being a restaurant, but if it was going to be some greater use or intensely parked use than what we've accounted for, that we would, we would come back under the same process, you know, for modification of the site plan.
And just to confirm, the layout has thirty-seven seats inside?
Thank you.
So any from ten to a dozen parking spaces would be adequate for at least the Chipotle portion of it, you would say? If there's thirty-seven, divide that by five, that's not quite eight.
Correct. We, right now, we have, we're assuming ten. So our site plan assumes ten. Ten are required and ten provided.
Are the two dumpsters that are on behind, directly behind Chipotle strictly for Chipotle?
Yes, so right now, the intent is that this loading area would serve a dual purpose for both Chipotle and the retail. The retail would have their own separate dumpster opposite the, the driver, my cursor is up here. Chipotle has, Chipotle has, they need their own dumpsters for food and recycling. So this is an enclosed dumpster that would only be dumpsters for Chipotle. The retail dumpster would be over.
Okay, there's some comments, review letters and comments going back and forth at this time. Is that accurate?
We have not seen any review, review lettered yet.
Yeah, we've just had the preliminary discussions that was the impetus for some changes that we did make, both to the dumpster area and to the pickup window, drive lane. I know, at least from talking or communicating with Ken today, that Charlie's more substantive review of the plan package is ongoing. Obviously, you know, his comments, anything that we get from the zoning board, though likely that seems like they're deferring solely to you guys on site plan review. We can respond to at the follow-up next meeting and come back with your seat-to-parking ratio info and data for Chipotle and the building elevation architecture. And we're open if, if anybody has an additional request for either data, information, what have you. If you communicate it through Ken, we'll make sure that we have it for the continued hearing so that hopefully we can answer any remaining questions at the next hearing.
Is there any height, vehicle height restrictions for your pickup window?
I'm going to have to walk in, George, with your van.
There, there is a height restriction bar typically in the pickup lanes for the reason being that there is a canopy that protects the pickup window. So when customers stop to pick up their food, they're not getting wet. So we do have a height restriction bar so that a truck wouldn't take that out. So, but that's...
George is walking.
It's funny, because Wendy's across the way and McDonald's in East Wareham, they, they post their clearance at nine feet, so you can't get under the clearance bar, but the clearance at the drive-through is like twelve feet.
Oh, really?
Going to need to see a full landscape plan, too. I don't think we've seen that.
So there is, in the, in the package we submitted, there is a full modified landscape plan.
Okay, I don't have the package at all yet, so I'm going to have to see Ken about that.
Okay, yeah, just, just one thing to add about the package, Charlie and Board, is that we recognize that there's been changes along the way. So the latest plan set that we have submitted, which I believe is dated January twenty-first, that, that's a comprehensive, you know, site plan that includes the things that have already been constructed. So it would be, you know, almost everything wrapped up in a neat package for what the development is today, including what's already been constructed. So the landscaping plan's comprehensive, the parking, the buildings, that type of thing. I think that would be easier for all to administer.
A lot more certainty now.
Yes.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at for continuance?
I don't think there's any reason we can't, you, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we're in front of the zoning board on Wednesday this week. So we'll know, you know, we'll know any marching orders from them by Wednesday. So I, I think that any changes we've talked about tonight are minor, and I'd like to come back at the earliest we could, which I think you mentioned earlier, is the March, March eighth.
Any more information sought by the board?
I'm good for now, Charlie. This is Richard.
Yep, me too.
So I would look to continue to March eighth.
So moved?
Second question.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Anything further? All on paper? Richard?
Aye.
Mike? Mike King?
Aye.
And I. Unanimous.
We appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, guys. It's third time's a charm. This is as clean as it's been, you guys coming in here, huh?
We'll be here as long as you want us here. We appreciate it. We're excited. Thank you very, very much.
Any, any tenant for next to Starbucks?
Don't know yet, but as soon as we know something, I'll tell you. Hopefully, by the next meeting, I'll have a better idea, but, but, but nothing yet.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
You have anything, Ken? You have other business about the town meeting articles?
Yes, I do. A couple of things that have happened, and we're going to have to advance some zoning bylaws for the spring town meeting. Two that are required by, by federal and state law are the MS four regulations and and the floodplain overlay district. Those have to be done by, by the mid-year, by June thirtieth. So at this time, it seems prudent that we schedule a public hearing to hear the articles for the town meeting and present them to town meetings so they can take a vote on it. The floodplain regulations, so the overlay district is substantially changed. It's essentially rewritten, rewritten by the state to meet the requirements of the federal government, FEMA, in the, in the implementation of the flood insurance rate program. And the MS four regulations are required as well to, but there's, I'm going to look at a way that maybe we can do this by rules and regulations rather than by zoning change to, to give us more time to work on the MS four regulations. But the floodplain regulations have to be in place and on the books by June thirtieth. Now, there's, and there's one other bylaw that has come about as a result of the solar fields, the solar farms being built in town, a lot of interest in how to better regulate solar farms so that the, the societal impacts associated with them are controlled better under the existing regulation, zoning regulations. And the group of people met together last week to consider changes in the solar bylaw. And I, as a result, I drafted up a, a short piece to essentially have, put solar farms on a holding pattern until a more substantial look at this, at the solar bylaws, zoning bylaws could be taken and something could be developed in by the fall of this year. So it's a stopgap measure, and what it does is it, it specifies a size, maximum size of a solar field to ten acres and requires the cleared land to be cleared for at least a period of five years prior to the application coming forward to the, to the town. So in that way, there'd be no more tree clearing. And there'd be a limit on the size. We've had substantially larger projects come through lately, twenty-five and more acres in size. And this would reduce it to a maximum of ten acres in the interim until the, that greater look could be taken on the solar bylaws and come up with a better, better standard to address some of the issues that have been coming up in the reviews of solar farms to date. So what I'm asking is that we schedule a public hearing to consider the solar bylaw amendment, the floodplain and the floodplain regulations. And maybe add in the MS four regulations as well, just in case we need that to address the requirements of the federal government.
Would you say there's a second meeting in March, probably?
That would give us enough time to advertise, yes.
Sounds like a plan.
Side note, Ken, if, if the laws were, if the solar, my question is about the North Carver Road solar farm. Is he grandfathered in to the current regulations given his time of his application?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Anything else? What are we going to do with MS four, Ken?
The requirements of the federal government is that EPA, US EPA said that what we need to do is, is have a standard for removal of total suspended solids and the limiting nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen. So that the, in the review of both new developments and redevelopment of properties, it retrofits and new construction include the facilities and the stormwater drainage systems that reduce the amount of suspended solids in the, in the column, water column, as well as taking out the nutrients through a series of, of treatment, stormwater treatment systems that are specified in the, in the state's Stormwater Management Handbook.
George, just as a comment on that, that MS four requirement is fairly comprehensive. I've had a chance to look at it, not, not in Wareham, but when I was working with Mashpee Planning Board, they looked at it a few months ago. And there were certain portions of that MS four requirement that they already were implementing through the regulations they had. But there were other things that were not specific in the bylaw, which by simply changing the language put them in compliance. But the one thing that Ken, you just mentioned, was phosphorus in addition to nitrogen? Did I hear that correct?
That's right.
Yeah. We don't have any guidelines right now on phosphorus removal and control. It's one of the more prevalent things that will get into freshwater supplies and is, and can be a more difficult one to remove than nitrogen. So I do have, I've got a paper that I found online that deals with phosphorus a little bit. I'll have to pull that out and see exactly what it contained. But that's a critical issue. It's one of the things that I wrote into my comments for the hospitality regulation, which I do not believe got incorporated into the latest draft. But it is an issue to deal with, and if MS four requires it, then we need to be looking into that.
Thank you, Joe. I know in the past, whenever you mentioned phosphorus, usually the response was, we don't talk about that because we don't have a way to treat it.
That's, that's what it has been. That's why it's been so difficult.
I know it's been removed from most detergents, but there's still causes.
Yeah, but there are some things that we do already that deal with the total suspended solids. Whenever you get a stormwater report, a storm drainage report is a part of your site plan or subdivision, you'll notice that they have a table where they calculate the total percentage of suspended solids that are removed. That's already being done through the stormwater management requirements, and we do it locally. But that's not to say that we couldn't tighten up the bylaw a little bit, depending on what the language of the MS four document is. And I don't happen to have one myself that I could look at. Ken, if you have one that you could email to me, it would be helpful to just be able to look at it and compare it to what we have for regulations now.
I'll do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Ken, are the redone FEMA maps available now?
They're going to be, yes, I do have them in the office. They've been distributed around Town Hall. The new maps are in place, and you can review them if you want.
Are they online? If you look something up, does that show or does the existing one?
I'm not sure if they're online at this time.
Okay.
We have, we have discs, though, so we can put them online if they're not already there. What you want to look for is the date of July sixth, two, twenty-twenty-one as the date on the, on the maps, because that's when they'll be official and enforced.
I'm not finding the right map. Never mind the dates on them.
Yeah, the index isn't that easy to work with. There is a nice program online, though, with, with the Yeah, the index isn't that easy to work with. There is a nice program online though, with, with the FEMA office in floodplains. Where you put in an, an address and it will. Lead you to the location on the map.
Very good. Anything else this evening? We're going to. A quick question on the Clemmie property I drove by today. I don't remember if someone can refresh me. There's one trailer there. There were three. Now there's one. I thought we were going to, we would. Asked him to remove all of them. Does anyone remember?
He's allowed to have one on the, on the property. It's just that you can't have more than one.
Okay, thank you. Got the keys? I have nothing else. You got the keys to lock the door, Mike?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, George?
Second.
Appropriate. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call? Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Good meeting.
Have a good night, guys.
Night, guys.